This is the June 15, 2021 meeting of the Akushna Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item of business today is the approval of several minutes. We are approving the executive session minutes from March 27, 2019. We are approving the Friday, April 3, 2020 executive session minutes, the Wednesday, May 12, 2021 executive session minutes, and the May 12, 2021 regular session minutes. Does anyone have any clarifications about any of those minutes? If not, we need a motion.
I make a motion to accept all of those minutes.
Second it.
All in favor, just raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. We have the budget.
So the budget is up to date through yesterday, and I haven't done anything else today to it, so. It's as up to date as it can be. We've got just a few weeks left to the fiscal year, so you'll see where 90% spent out from the salary line and 98.6% spent out from operating. I have requested the interdepartmental transfer of $2,000 that we spoke about at the last meeting that you voted for. So we will, that will go to the board of selectmen and the finance committee, and hopefully that will all go well, and they will transfer from the salary line to the operating line $2,000. And that will be spent out by the end of the fiscal. We will have an overage of just under $5,000 in the salary line that will be returned to the town for the general fund. But other than that, I think we've done well for this year. And unless you have any specific questions, that's all I have to go through.
I don't have any questions, it looks good. Anyone else? We need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the new business today, we need to have our annual selection of officers. We need a nomination for chair.
A nomination for chair, since she's doing such an outstanding job.
My second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I accept. Thank you. For secretary.
I'm on a Jerry.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jerry, do you accept?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm just busy.
No, it's okay.
Doing a great job, Jerry.
Okay, thank you. Next order of business is the reopening, the full reopening with the new hours.
Yes, so when we last saw each other in May, I thought we'd be talking about opening without appointments because we were still doing browsing by appointment, and it sounded as if the state wouldn't move to a full reopening until maybe August. But here we are, just a few days after we met. You know, as you know, it was announced that the state would be opening fully on May 29. And that was while I was on my two-week vacation. So we're open, but at temporary hours, as you know, so we're open Monday through Friday, 1 to 5. And Saturday is 10 to 2 currently, and the window is still open, the hours, it's been open for the past year. We just celebrated the year anniversary of the takeout window last week. Who would have thunk? But here we are, now we're going to talk about full reopening, which is great news. What a full reopening means, I first want to say, is that we have to eliminate the takeout window. And I do expect that's going to be hard for some people because people have gotten very used to the convenience of placing holds, us checking them out, and they just pop over to the window and pick up their bag. We've loved that service, and we're very happy we've been able to provide it, especially during the pandemic. And we know that a lot of patrons have also loved that service. Some patrons didn't use the service and couldn't wait to get back in the building, and they're very happy to be back in the building. Some patrons who were using takeout are now very happy to be back in the building. But we're still seeing more people at the takeout window than we are actually coming into the building. So I'm sure that will change once we expand the hours to get back to, you know, more regular hours and not these temporary hours we've been doing. But I just want to put that out there, that, you know, we've served over 6,700 people at the takeout window. We've circulated over 40,000 items, or just under, sorry, not over, just under 40,000 items at the window. But we cannot manage both, we just don't have enough staff or the space to manage both because, you know, we've taken over the community room to be able to offer the takeout service. And if we're talking about a full reopening, we have to eventually talk about programming and using that room for what it was intended to be used for. So, that said, I am looking to end takeout on July 3, which is a Saturday. So we've been letting patrons know that's coming. And the announcing that with a date gives someone, you know, gives people an idea of an end date. Now, that said, if someone has a hardship or a concern due to COVID, and they don't want to come in the building still because of COVID, then we will work with whoever that person is to accommodate them, whether that means we're meeting them at the door with a bag or running out to their car if they're unable to physically get to the building. We offer home delivery, that's something we did pre-COVID and something we did during COVID, so that's always an option for someone. So we will do what we can to work with individuals who are unable to come into the building. But we're hoping once we go to full hours, people will just be happy to come in. I mean, we can also check things out in advance, and you just stop at the desk and pick up your bag if that's, you know, if people are willing to at least come in the front door to pick up a few more feet than the convenient takeout. We may takeout so good that people want to keep it forever. And I wish we could, but there is no way to pull that off. So anyway, long story short, that's when we're talking full reopening, we're talking eliminating takeout and expanding the hours from what we've been doing for the temporary hours. Now, as you know, we're required to be open 40 hours a week for the state. We've been doing takeout for 36 hours, so almost, and they eliminated that requirement for this past, for the past two fiscal years. So we haven't been not meeting the requirement by moving 36 hours of takeout. But we need to at least get back to our 40 hours. We were at 44 hours pre-COVID, so we were four hours over. And the hours that I'm proposing to you today actually put us at 45 hours, which is one extra hour than we were offering before COVID. I'm trying, hoping to be able to market this as new and improved hours. I've given you a sheet that lists what our pre-COVID hours were and then what I'm proposing now, which would be Monday through Thursday, 10:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Fridays would stick to the 1 to 5, and Saturdays would be 9:30 to 2:30. I know the half an hour is a little odd from standard hours of, you know, of business hours. But I'm proposing it for a few, this has been after a lot of thought. I've talked to some patrons, I've just randomly selected people to ask about this. I've talked to staff, some of the staff, most especially Sandra, because she's my other full-timer. So I've been, and we bounce a lot of ideas off each other. But there's a couple of reasons that the half an hour works for us, or I think will work for us and will work for patrons. First of all, it gives us consistency with our hours, Monday through Thursday. We were always staggered, 10, 1, 10, 1, you know, no one was ever sure. Monday through Thursday now, we're consistent, 10:30 to 7:30. With these new hours, patrons will get five mornings a week versus three mornings a week pre-COVID. And we, people were always asking about more morning hours, so this gives us an opportunity to introduce more morning hours. It allows us to maintain our four evenings a week, which that was also very important to patrons, that we be open in the evening, so we still have four evenings a week. It gives us the extra hour of in-person service. And then we get to the staff part of it. Pre-COVID, every week people's schedules would change in terms of, we're on sort of a bi-weekly rotation. But so it wouldn't be every week, but every other week. And people were always trying to remember, is this the Monday that I'm in at 9:45 to get there for the 10:00 a.m. opening? Or is this the Monday that I'm in at 10:00? So we always, it was, you know, I mean, they have a printed schedule, and we do the schedule digitally also, but it was just a constant having to remember. This way, and for the past year, I've been able to keep staff on it. Your start time is 10:00 a.m. on Mondays, your start time is 1:00 p.m. on Tuesdays. It's been very helpful for the staff. And I think moving forward, you know, we have to be mindful, we're all coming out of this pandemic, every single one of us. So do I now want to make someone's life a little more complicated by going back to this 9:45, 8:45, 1:15, oh, today's Wednesday, you have to leave at 2:45? No, I don't want to do that anymore. Because also you get, like, they're, they work 19 hours a week, some of them, but that's the highest they can be, is 19, which is not divisible by anything, 19. So there's no way to evenly have them be at four hours every day or five, you know. And it's worse when you factor in quarter of, quarter past, whatever. So from my perspective as the scheduler, which is something I don't usually involve you all in, but scheduling is a puzzle nightmare a lot of the times, especially, you know, second someone's out sick or on vacation, or like even when you can plan for it, it's still a nightmare. So for me personally, it's going to make my job easier for the schedule, but on the staff, from their perspective, their schedules and work life will be a lot easier because they will know their start times. So I also feel that now is the time to make a change like this one. If we were, if we hadn't gone through a pandemic, I would never come to you and say, couldn't we just open at 10:30? You know, Monday, that wouldn't, wouldn't ever have occurred to me. But I feel like we're going to have to be retraining people on our hours anyway. So why not do this now? Yes, 10:30 is a little odd, but people will get used to that, the same way you get used to anything like that. And if you're not sure, then you check our website, or you go on Facebook, and you go to the sales site, you go to Google, Yelp, wherever you look, those hours will be correct because we'll make sure we do all the updating, and where you call us. And it'll be on voicemail if we don't pick up. So I mean, there's, I think it'll just be, yes, it'll be something for patrons to get used to, but in the end, I think that it's a bigger, the benefits will outweigh the cons of the first few weeks being like, oh, I forgot it was 10:30. Well, it hasn't been anything for the past year, so, you know, now it's, now it's 10:30. So that's my spiel on the hours. And if we try it out and it doesn't work, we can always go back to what the pre-COVID hours were. People want us to be open till 8 o'clock instead of 7:30, or they don't want the extra mornings or whatever. We can, that's something we can talk about down the line. But we have the staff to cover this, and it just seems like this would be the time to make a switch. I mean, I think also, I was very focused at first on, oh, we only need the 40 hours a week. And then I sort of sat back and said, look, we didn't lose, I mean, the town was very good to us throughout this entire process. We didn't lose any of our funding, we didn't, there was never talk of furloughing or laying anyone off. I mean, so why would we reduce our hours to the public now when we have no reason to reduce the hours? We didn't lose anything during COVID, and so now you get a bonus hour, you know. So anyway, I, after a lot of thought on it, I'm really happy with it. The staff I've spoken with are happy with it, the patrons have mentioned it, too, seem happy with it. So now, now it's up to you all, whether or not you think we should give it a go or think it's wacky.
I like the consistency, the scheduling that you've mentioned, and the convenience for the public.
Yeah.
I think it's good on all three points.
Absolutely, you have a wonderful job doing this.
Yeah, thanks. Makes sense. Good. Especially like something so small, it makes such a big difference.
Right.
I think so, too.
I think it'll help all of us, like, you know, patrons and staff alike. I have, just have one question. The, so the proposed library hours, so we have, we have the tentative start date of 6:21.
Yes.
But we're not closing the takeout window until July 3.
Right.
So for those, for that little interim time, we're gonna.
We're gonna make it work.
We're gonna make it work.
We're gonna make it work. And if there's a time where there's only two staff in the building and we can't manage both, we're gonna put a sign in the takeout window that says to ring the bell.
Okay.
Or come to the front door and visit us from the side if you're ready to do that. So we're just gonna stick, we're gonna have nothing else in the window so that that one sign is very visible, it doesn't, nothing else to look at, just that one sign in the center of the window. So on the odd times that we have to do, because there will be an hour here or there, but we will have to do that. But I think that'll be the solution, and that'll get us through two weeks.
Right, I mean, it's a short period of time, but I noticed that there was like an overlap, so I was trying to figure out how, but I like the bell, because I mean, you just ring the bell and it's just, you know.
And then.
That's really good. Or like you said, come to the door.
We'll just, we'll just come over, they, or, you know, if they have to, they can call us from their car. Like, we'll figure, we'll figure that part out, I think, but then that's an excellent point. And I thought, well, we'll just wait till July to go with the new hours. But I feel like, no, we're at the point now where more people are showing up when we're, you know, beyond the hours of 1 to 5. We're, we, this week, we have seen more people, we had quite a few people come last evening, and it's so hard when you're in here, and then you have to turn them away. Like, and it's especially hard when it's a family, and I'm like, oh, I want them to come in the building, and now I'm telling them that they can't. So I really, and I debated about this until this morning, but I just can't see waiting any longer to expand the hours. And then, we'll, we'll just make it work, you know, the past, when I came back from vacation, then most of the other staff were using up vacation hours also. And now we're at a point, this, within the next two weeks, where there are less, more people are here and less, you know, less of us are on vacation. So we do, we are pretty much at a full staff most days, so we'll just make, we'll make it work for the next two weeks, and hopefully everyone will be happy.
How were you managing the sign? Were you have the hours on the sign ready for Monday?
So the sign, we ended up, if you'll remember, the old sign, we ended up putting a chalkboard piece on it to cover that sign when we started takeout, because we needed a way to cover that sign. And we have so many old chalkboards from the school in the basement. So the building department helped us put up the chalkboard, and then we just wrote on it with about library takeout.
Right.
So we have to fix that, but as a temporary fix, I think we'll just use the chalkboard again to write the hours. And we'll send out, we have a draft of an e-newsletter ready to go that could even go out tonight, just so we're giving people a heads up, so we have that ready to go. Update the website, update the sales site, update the app. We have to check on Google, Yelp, anywhere where people search for businesses, our own website, if I didn't say that. So we, we have a whole list of things that need to be updated. But eventually, we're going to have to replace that sign out front because there'll be no way to tweak it with the new hours. I think it would just look very messy, as it was when we added Friday hours. Friday got added below Saturday because that was the only place to add anything, and it didn't look quite right. So eventually, we'll be talking about purchasing a new sign. But I think in the meantime, we could certainly just clean off that chalkboard. And Leslie, one of our staff members, has excellent handwriting for that kind of thing, and she can just make us a nice, nice vivid, bright chalk marker thing that will, will look nice, I think. So that'll be the temporary fix for that, but eventually, we'll be talking about a new sign.
Excellent. After we make sure the library hours are good.
Right, right. Once we've given it a go and everyone seems pleased, then we can, yeah, make that investment.
I definitely like the consistency. I'm one of those, what day is it today? Oh, rats, they're only open at 1:00. And happens to me every day.
Every one of us, I'm sure, is driven up here.
Right? Why are they not open?
Yeah. I always have to check the website.
What day is it? Oh, no, it's August.
And you're not alone, so I think this'll, this'll work. We're gonna do a temporary, like, we have so many bookmarks, so we, with the hours already printed that were, you know, given to us, that the Akushna Credit Union, you know, does. Every time we put in that request, they've accommodated that for us and they've handled that. So instead of asking them for new ones, we will, we will just print a label that goes over it so that'll be a fix until we're ready to print new ones.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. So I think it'll be good.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments on the hours? Let's make a motion.
Yeah, once you do that, I'll, I'll, I just want to make another note.
On this?
Yeah, about opening. The only thing that we're not going to start doing right away is programming. I do have staff who are not ready to do that yet. So, you know, I have staff with children whose children can't be vaccinated, and so they are concerned about doing programming at this time. So I'm not pressuring anyone, we are going to do a summer reading program. It will just look a little more like it did last year than how it looked in 2019. So we will be announcing our plans for summer reading in the next couple of weeks. But as far as in-person programs go, anything we do will be outside. And we're hoping that by fall, we'll be able to start up in-person programming for children. We are going to bring back the book club and the readers group, the cookbook club and the readers group this summer. So they've already, we've already been in talks for outdoor meetings with them. And depending on what happens with the bath lawn and any projects that might happen there, or a pergola, which that's all still pending, we'll talk more about possibly bringing back the concert series in late summer, which we talked about, it's fascinating. But I just wanted to make that note on in-person programs. We also probably, until early fall, won't loan out the community room to anyone who needs to use it because we did have, you know, cross-scout troops who use the room or other, you know, nonprofits in the area. But we're, we're gonna keep that as-is, I think. Not as-is, we're gonna make it look like the community room again, but we're not going to loan it out. But people will be able to use the study rooms, the five computers will be available, the laptops will be available, so a full re, all without appointment. So we're, we're very close to the full reopening, and just the program piece will still be in the works. Anyway, thank you, sorry.
No, that's not probable. Okay, we need a motion on the new hours.
Make a motion to accept the new hours as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thanks. The last piece is the pipe work in the basement.
Yep, so I'm just gonna basically table this for now, but just last week, we, the custodian let me know there was a slow leak in the basement. And I sort of worried that it was going to be something bigger than it was, which is why it made it onto the agenda. In case there was an issue, I didn't want to have to, you know, we need money transferred, I didn't want to have to call an emergency meeting next week. But as of right now, it looks like between the building department and the DPW, the problem has been fixed. And so I think we're, we're good for now, so.
With that black tape.
Yeah. There may be some tape involved, which may just be a Band-Aid, I don't know. But I know that it doesn't smell anymore and it's not leaking, so we may have to bring this up again at another time for now.
Leaking water?
Yes, leaking water, yeah. Which conveniently, the leak was right over the sump pump, so at least it was coming into the sump pump. But everything is dry, there's no, there's no odor, and the public restroom is good to go, so everything, everything's good. So we, we may have to talk about it at another time, but for now, we're good.
Okay, so we will table that issue.
Yes. You never have to talk about it again. The director's report. So just a couple of notes from that. I've already mentioned we're finalizing plans for summer reading, and we're hoping to launch that on June 28. That's at least the plan as of right now. Also, something that didn't make it onto the director's report, because I just found out about it yesterday. I applied for a grant through the state that would give us at no cost to us or the town five hotspots powered by T-Mobile. A lot of libraries in the area do circulate hotspots. We have maybe been asked, I don't know, five times tops in six years about hotspots, to my knowledge. So I don't think there's a real demand, but if we have the opportunity to get the free service for a year, I think we should give it a try. And if it doesn't work, then it didn't harm us at all, you know, if it's, if we don't have a lot of interest. But if it does work, then we could talk about maybe continuing the service once the grant is up. But I figured might as well go for it. It's a, the state is getting the funding through the Institute for Museum and Library Services, so it's a federal grant being administered by the state. So I'll keep you posted on that, but we should be getting them at some point in July. Yeah.
Okay, hotspots, what is it?
So that you can get Wi-Fi, basically, so you use it as a, if you're at home and you don't have.
So when you come in the library, you'll.
You check it out and you take it home with you. And we, we have to determine still how long you'd get to borrow it for. But a lot of libraries will circulate them for up to a week. Sorry, I shouldn't explain that a little bit better, but they'll circulate them for up to a week. So it's great if you're going on a vacation and you know you're going to be in an area where you don't have internet access, so if you take this hotspot with you, you'll be able to get on your iPad or.
Never thought to do it that way.
Yeah. Yes. So it's a, it's a.
It's a camping.
It's a camping when we are at the hotspot.
Right, exactly, right. But it's guaranteed internet as long as you're in an area that T-Mobile services.
Yeah, I've got two weeks, I'm going to discuss it, so I'll get them the dates.
Okay. We gotta figure out how we're gonna, we're gonna loan it, we're gonna test it.
Yeah, I have to test it.
Maybe it'll be a test one, yeah, it could be a test paper. But also for people who don't have internet at home, which is still, and it, not everyone, you might have a computer, but you might not have internet, or you might not have reliable internet, and you have something that you know needs to be done on your computer, and then you.
Bob tried to put a Verizon hotspot on his phone to go to his laptop, and it just, it just wouldn't work. And we went through everything. Then we went back to the office, and we have Comcast. So we went on the Comcast one, there's one, it's Comcast Wi-Fi, that's a public one. But then, no, it's Xfinity Wi-Fi, it's a public one. Xfinity in capital letters is a secure one, you have to use your password. So we did that, no charge, or anything, and instead of paying Verizon the $10 a month, we're all right, this works.
Great.
But can't get it done, discuss it future.
Okay, that's it. Well, you could try it out, and we'll see.
Okay.
But yes, other than that, those are, those are my, my highlights. Everything else is sort of a lot of end-of-year stuff, getting ready for new fiscal year stuff. And then just have.
Did a wonderful job getting through this difficulty, so.
For sure.
It's up to you, dear.
Thank you.
And your staff.
Yep. They've been great, we're very lucky to have them all here.
Anybody have anything else on the director's report? Anything? No? Okay. All right, future business. We have the date for next meeting.
So right now, I've penciled in, if possible, July 13, which is a Tuesday. We could still do 5 o'clock, or we used to do 4 o'clock pre-pandemic, that was pretty standard. But if 5 o'clock is better for people, then that's fine on our end, too. But does July 13 work, Tuesday?
July 13 is good for me. Would you rather do it at 4?
I prefer 4.
4, 4? Does that, does 4 o'clock work for everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so Tuesday, July 13 at 4, here in the library again. How that we were.
Maybe in the community. Actually, most likely in the community room.
Yeah, yeah, we should, yeah, we should be back, too.
Yep.
Everyone's good with?
I believe.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, stay tuned for emails just in case, you know, things come through and just in case we have to, you know, we'll be in the community room or, you know, different things happen. We'll just keep up to date with that. I think that's it. Anybody else have anything else? All right. We need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This June 15th, 2021 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is, no clock, it is 5:31. Thank you.